Alright, we're ready.
Is it raining pretty good out there?
No, not that much.
Oh, okay.
It was.
It's coming.
Yeah, I just saw. I think Douglas got a lot of rain.
I believe that... We're getting, I mean, Sierra Vista's getting pretty downpour on right now.
Oh.
It's coming here.
It's on its way.
Mm-hmm.
Whenever you're ready, Nana.
Okay, we're ready.
Alright, you guys. This is the special session of the Bisbee Arts Commission on Monday, March 11th, 2019 at 6:03 PM. Go ahead and roll call, please, Nana.
Karen Schumacher.
President.
Sharon Stetter.
President.
Laura Morgan.
Laura Morgan?
Here.
Kate Drew Wilkinson.
Present.
Sandra Smith excused, Bill Higgins.
Here.
Nana Williams here.
As I believe we have no call with the public, we're gonna have to move on to the item. Discussion of possible approval for the unveiling party for the Sig Art Machine at the Bisbee Royale to include but not limited to band, food, alcohol, and time of event.
Good.
And I'll turn it over to Sharon since I think she has the most updates at this point.
Okay, so I did meet with Becky Reyes at the Royale to discuss the party. And there are a couple ways we can approach the party. We have the date of April 26th set aside. The time slot that we're considering would be 5:00 to 9:00 PM, is that correct?
I believe that the Barks and Brews fundraiser for the animal shelter is happening until 5:00. So it's really, I was just thinking we should at least take that into consideration.
Well, and if we start then at 5:00, people could go from one to the other and just keep on brewing.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, so we have the permission to have the entire day on the 25th to set up the event. If, here are our options for expenses. She was hoping that if we get the rent, if we get the rent at $250, they're gonna wanna take more from our sales. If we decide that we want to do our own, do all of our food and liquor, which she is suggesting that would probably be better because she says their wine collection and all that is getting pretty slim. We can rent the Royale space without the cafe, without the Blue Moon Cafe part of it, for $550. If we rent it for $250, then we give them more proceeds from our sales of food and liquor. Now, understand that for the Royale, they have to have, there has to be food sales, or food has to be part of it. If we rent the space though ourselves, just for ourselves, at $550, then we can do whatever we want. The other option, a second option or another thing to consider, we can have the entire building, including the Blue Moon Cafe, for $800. And then that would give us a space to do, to hang as a gallery, to have, if we wanted to have an art auction in addition to our, because that room will allow for us to hang art. There's not a lot in the, you can do in the Royale space that is so dark. So that's an option as well, and those were the prices that she gave me. Here's a couple of suggestions that she said has worked, has worked with other nonprofit fundraising events in the past. What if we were to sell tickets to our event for $10? Then we could probably raise all the money that we would need for the rent of the space and we could probably, you know, obviously, we're gonna have at least 80 people. I suspect we'll have a couple hundred people attend. And that would cover our expenses of the event and then proceeds of the sales from...
She dropped off.
She dropped off, oh. Pause, we should pause, okay.
Probably going through the...
Oh, I can go through these other concepts as well. Hi, Miss Laura. We lost you for a moment.
Just for a second, but I'm here.
Yay! Driving, are you?
I am driving, yes, and I'm next to the border, so you know how bones love that.
Yeah, lovely connections down there. The last other option that I can tell you that she offered, these are other ideas to approach the event. There are many ways, in other words, that we can use the Royale. If we have a guest chef and a 70/30 split on the food sales. If we buy all the food ourselves and have all the labor done ourselves, that'd be a 50/50. And liquor sales will all go to the Royale, by the way. That's their, that's their portion, if we don't rent the space, okay? Those are, those are the options. Did you hear the idea of maybe selling tickets, Laura, for the event?
Hear that, and I heard, I heard a little bit about, you know, what the costing is, yeah.
Okay, good. So, that's what I know so far, and at this point, I'll just turn it back over to Karen. And we'll...
Yeah, the thing that I, the thing about renting the extra room is that I don't, personally, I feel like we have time to set up an entire art auction. Because we're doing this faster than we've ever done before.
And the lighting is not big enough anyway.
Well, let me, let me suggest a, here's, here's a way that would make that happen quickly. Most, we have a fairly comprehensive now, good list of artists that are participating in the machine. And they would each give a piece as a piece to auction, if we wanted to do it. But I think that might be added in expense, $250 more that maybe we don't need, but we might make that money back, I don't know.
Yeah, just sketchy because I, I mean, I know that I personally, I have to, you know, I have the showcase hotel thing. I'm the door person, I have to do the finances for the next month. So I'm just short on time. And I don't wanna put any of, you know, that's a lot of work for four of us. One of the reasons we were waiting to do it was just to at least get rid of our members, but... The one that sounded the best to me, the option at least, was the $550, we pay, they sell food, we supply our own booze and give out wine.
And where are we gonna get, are we, they sell food, you mean from their, from their chef?
They said that they were willing to.
Yeah, that was a different thing.
Okay.
If we buy the food... And if we buy the food and have the chef or somebody, whoever we want to prepare it, we'll get 70% of proceeds of sales. If we buy the food and they have their own person preparing or whatever, it'll be a 50/50 split on food sales.
What if we were just to let them sell their own food, like normal?
I'll ask, she didn't even bring that up, she...
I mean, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's what you guys want, I don't know what the food situation is.
Thing is, what does somebody, if we charge them at the door $10, what do they get for that? I mean...
Well, what they're getting is the ability to support the Arts Commission.
Exactly, they get to come to the event, the event is gonna be fun. And, and maybe we do consider the idea of having, you know, orders and things that we, but, but not the liquor. Maybe we do have the food paid for and...
The buyer will go?
We pay for the food?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the only thing about the liquor thing is that unless they're willing to buy the booze for us in some capacity, which means either supplying it at the bar or ordering it for us so that we can give it away or whatever, we do not have time to get a liquor license.
No, no, and, and so we would be, we're gonna be using theirs. But the way their liquor license works is that a certain percentage, 40% of this proceeds that they take in at the Royale have to be food sales, it can't just be a bar. But I think her, what she, what I understood is, or we could actually just rent the facility for $550 and we deal with the food and the liquor ourselves.
It's too late for liquor.
No, no, I mean, we use their liquor license, but we buy it, we have to...
Well, if we buy it, they have to buy it, we can't buy...
They have to buy for us, yeah.
Yeah, and we don't, because we don't have time to get sponsored or anything. Usually Central School is the one that buys the liquor for us.
Right.
They get the liquor license. Now that we're in a building that has a liquor license, it's just so complicated to necessarily...
There has to be food, there has to be food for them, yeah. Let me, let me clarify that with Becky, but, but I am in agreement with you on that $550. I will also tell you that I do believe I could pull it off to get art and fill that space, but it's up to you guys if we wanted to...
We tell you, are you doing a silent auction or... But the $850 is, then we're not gonna have very much left over for food or band.
$850 is for the whole use of the whole space, yeah. Well, you're right, we would not have very much left over at a budget of $1,000, is that what we said?
They would still not to explode.
Oh, there's still not a lot, but we are, if we charge for the tickets for people to come in, we could actually make all of that back.
Sold liquor.
So that's the choice.
If we go 500, that gives us a little more money to pay a band, you know, gives us maybe more options.
Yeah, the, you know, I guess it's really just a bottom line of do we just, just unveil the machine with the art in the machine? You know, that's a great idea too, and then, you know, have a band. Where are we with a band?
I'm waiting for a callback, so this evening, what I would like to do is that if we, if that one falls through, I would like to vote on a list of three and then that'll back us up so that we don't have to have another meeting. I'm just trying to think about, not so yet. So the first person was that Joel Croco, who played New Year's Eve, and I'm waiting for him to get back to me.
He was good.
He was good, it was dancy.
How do you spell his last name?
C-R-O-C-C-O, I think.
C-C, yeah.
At least that's what he goes by as a musician. And then, do you guys two have any ideas of someone you would have as a backup? We need a couple backups.
I would suggest maybe Russell Cat Daddy's band. I don't remember what they're called, but...
I think it's the Cat Daddy Band.
Yeah, he's easy and accessible to get a hold of.
Is Saint Cinder back in town?
No, not yet.
Not, no, they're not.
Who was it?
Saint Cinder.
No, there's only just, there's just a couple of them left. I know that I would love to have them, but...
They've been playing with Jessica and Billy, they're calling themselves the Juniper Jazz something.
That's right, yeah.
But it's only, I think, one or two of the guys from Saint Cinder.
Yeah.
Because I'd love to have Saint Cinder.
Well... Yeah.
What about, is Old Ang Zai a band to dance to?
That's, nah, not really, no kind of thing.
That's right, they're popular, but they're not really...
Okay, alright.
And also, we're trying to find somebody who doesn't play for free once a week.
Yeah, right.
This is, you know, we need some of your...
Yeah, because you go to the bar, you know, I mean, if we, you know, and listen to, you know, most of these bands. Now, the first name you mentioned, I never heard of before, so that would be a novelty, you know.
Yeah, that's, that sounds, that would be a really nice one, and...
Yeah.
And he's...
Nobody wants to pay $10 and see him.
To hear Russell Cat Daddy when you can go and see him at the Royale, I mean, at the...
He doesn't, but he doesn't play too often, doesn't he?
No, he doesn't, he's not, you're, that's true.
Yeah, that's what we're aiming for, so just...
And he's an artist, and I would like for him to maybe participate in our machine at some point.
So third option for a band, Laura, do you have any ideas?
Uh, I, uh...
I know, sorry. That's how I feel. I just wanna have a few backups.
Well, we got Billy and Jessica and them, what about them?
It's the same thing, they play once a week, you know.
Yeah, that's true, they play every Saturday, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
I might be able to get a band to come down from Phoenix, but I need, I need, I didn't, I didn't think about that part of this tonight as my part. But I, but can we just leave that third band as a question mark? And if we can get a band, what is our budget for that band?
Well, we got, what, $1,500, we gotta a little bit of our pay. You know, really, it depends on how big a band, how many people are in the band, I mean, you know, five, it could be anywhere to $500, you know, 250, you know.
It's like, yeah, I mean, the rate is, it's 100 and up.
Right, yeah.
And if it's a hometown thing...
Well, if we wanted to invite a band, I do know through my kids, some good bands from up in the valley.
Well, if these two wouldn't work out, what I would do is that we're gonna vote on these and then the third option, blank, you could, if we decide these two will not work, you could proposition them, we would vote on the final approval at the, the final meet, at the next meeting.
At the April...
But we're only, let's just do that on the straits.
Okay.
But that would be with you having word of mouth or an agreement with them of some, you know, like... So...
How much are we paying them?
We have decided here.
It could be anywhere, we're deciding, you know, it depends upon who it is, obviously. But we've got $1,500. If we pay the Royale $550 for the use of the space that gives us the permission to do our own vending of food and wine. So that's, I think that's probably a smart way for us to go, using their liquor license. It'll make more money.
If you, if you were to only proposition the artists that were included in the machine, which is not a bad idea, we could get easels from Central School and put those in the other space without having to rent the whole thing.
You're probably right, yeah.
I think that might be a great way to go. So that would be up to 20 artists and that would keep it within reason. And we would do a silent auction, do you think?
It's a nice, similar thing to, yeah.
Yeah, like these are the people, you know.
Who are putting their work into this machine, this is what you, you might end up with. I, yeah, I thought it would be easy to do, so...
Let's, can we do that without renting the other part of the building?
Sure.
Okay, that, I feel better about that, just because...
Yeah, you're gonna have a...
They're getting ready to use some construction on that side as well, so...
You're gonna have the artists set up for...
Easels on the table is so much simpler.
Art, just using the hall, just using the main hall of the Royale, we'll set the art up around on easels. We'll, we'll figure it out. I can't, I, I can use, as long as I use those contact strips for hanging, I can hang on the wall, she's given me permission to hang on the walls that are actual walls. And then behind the bench seating at the back, there's that soundproofing wall that's fabric coated. I can actually put nails into that, but not thing very heavy can hang on that.
It's very dark.
It's very dark.
It's so dark in there.
Yes.
On the brightest day, it's dark.
I know, it's really too dark in there. So it's, so it's a bit of an issue. They were looking into finding clip-on lights to put on things too, that they might be able to, like an LED clip-on light. So they, she's already considering this for future things as well, so maybe she comes up with, I'll ask her.
I've got a couple of minutes to spotlights, I like spotlights.
Yeah, things like that, yeah.
And they can, I can make them, yeah.
Let's create a budget right now and look at that. So $550 for the space.
Space rental, okay.
Alcohol, I'm guessing from previous times, we wanna keep it around 300. I'm talking beer and wine.
Beer and wine. Yep.
That's probably over, but I'm happy you're over.
Band.
Band up to...
500?
Well, I don't know.
If you do that, you only have $150 left.
Yeah, we wouldn't have any money left.
$300 for a band.
300, okay. I'm still voting, I'm still, I still believe we need to sell tickets to this event. That gives us more money.
Let's finish this one thing first.
So 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 1150, that gives us 350 left. Four additional supplies, including advertising and things like tape, you know, layers. Including but not limited to cups, because we need to get down that kind of stuff.
I think she suggested that we can use their, all of their stuff, okay.
Oh, so, and also in regards to the poster, so I can have Ben do it, but we don't have the same computer that we used to. We don't have, it doesn't matter. Uh, but, so we need a, we need to get a Photoshop subscription, like 20 bucks for the one month. That's something we can do.
Okay, do you want to, would you, would you be willing to be reimbursed for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that. That sounds good, so including that 350 is the $20 subscription to, and monthly, one-time Photoshop. And then what you would do, Laura, is that once you pay for that, you just print, you're gonna need to make a copy, like take a screenshot of that and send it to me and I'll send it to the city, okay?
Alright, sounds good.
So what I have right now is 550 for the venue, 300 for beer and wine and food. Does that include food too?
Wow.
I...
That's not good work.
That's not much money for food.
Let me re-do this. 550 for the space, beer and wine is 300, 300, up to 300 for the band. Let's put 250 for food. And then $100 would go to supplies, limited to like printing, cups, I don't know what, tape, I don't know, clip lights. How do you guys feel about that?
I think, I, I do believe that we, I also believe that if we needed to, we could get some underwriting too, if we needed more money, but I think that that budget can work for us.
I want to be underwriting.
Extra hustle.
No worries, no worries, I'm good at this.
So that's the, the budget that I would like to approve for this evening. Is that, I can go ahead and approve that budget? Can we vote on things individually or...
You can do whatever you'd like.
So I'm gonna go ahead and...
Because I made it broad enough for you to vote on every item if you wanted to.
I love vagueness. Especially, I don't work, I'm kind of vague. First thing, so I wanna, I would like to move to approve the budget for the Sig Art Machine unveiling party as follows. $550 rental to the Bisbee Royale for the space. $300 for beer and wine, up to $300 for band, all of these are up too. $250 for food and $100 for additional supplies, including copying and, you know, cups and the little things and that sort of stuff. And including the, the $20 for additional supply, or, that is, the $100 will have to include the $20 subscription to Photoshop. Does this make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So I move, do I have a second?
I second that we accept this budget for our unveiling party on the April 26th.
Do I have all ayes?
Aye.
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 Alright, we're good on that one. Time is between, so we, the time is 5:00 PM to 9:00, April 26th. The band, I'm gonna go ahead and motion to approve the band as...
You're gonna have to approve the time first.
Okay. I motion to approve the time on April 26th for the event at the Bisbee Royale, the unveiling party for the Sig Art Machine to be from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All ayes?
Aye.
Is that an aye?
Yeah, that's a aye.
Alright. The next thing we're gonna do is...
This is fun.
No, right, this is fun, just go through it. I motion to approve the following options as bands. Number one is Joel Croco, if that follow. Number two, Russell Cat Daddy. Number three, 2B, we'll, we'll just leave the two and then we'll have to do it on the next agenda. So that's my motion, those two band options, do I have a second?
Yes, I second.
Eight seconds, all ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Karen, can I ask you to text me the name of the first artist so that I have the proper spelling to the poster?
Text the name of what?
List of artists.
Oh yeah, list of artists. That would be the next thing we're gonna go over this evening, it's just, it's a little bit not, I mean, it is...
All these, you want to name the artists for her poster for the band?
Yeah, for poster, for the poster.
The, are you talking about the band?
Yes.
As soon as I have confirmation on the band, I will send you the name.
Alright, cool.
So what we're aiming for is to get you everything for your poster, hopefully in the next week so that the poster can be printed by the beginning of the month, okay?
Yes, 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 yes.
That sound good? Alright.
Yeah. Oh, and I also need the, the limits for our logo.
Okay, I can send that to you, I can send you the Arts Commission logo. Well, one thing we're also probably wanna, might wanna include is the list of artists that are gonna be in the machine, artists and organizations, you know.
Yes.
The other thing too, I just thought about, since you're gonna make it a silent auction, you don't need to vote on that.
I motion to approve a silent auction, a potential silent auction of the artists participating in Sig Art Machine on April 26th. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. This is kind of, well, this is motion for the rest of the time, what else do we want to motion?
I have an idea for a motion. Here's a, a way to get some enthusiasm, besides the fact that people are gonna get something cool out of the machine. But what if we were to see the machine, where two of the boxes in the machine have a $100 bill in them? And that makes people go up and, you know, spend and...
Yours busses your budget.
Yeah, well, no, if we can get that donated, it could just be...
Well, you might find underwriter.
If somebody can donate money to it, then I think it's fine.
Yeah, is that a good idea?
Good idea, a little bit of...
Should I motion that one too? I'm just getting caught up all this time. From the city council, so unanimous, right Bill?
Pardon me?
Nothing. I move to approve the concept of including donated money inside the cigarette machine for a lucky participant.
Yeah, just for the, just for the one night, it won't be, if, if, if we don't get, if the money doesn't come out the machine, well, we'll pull it back out, but...
I, but do I have a second?
Yes, you have a second.
All ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
I'm trying to sell all 220 pieces in this machine, our first time out.
The roles that I personally may be taking in the next, other than the band, I gotta work on the graphic for the machine, front and side.
Oh shoot, I didn't bring you the banner, but I sent you the dimensions, I have that original one if you want it.
Find a band, graphic for the front and side, and then of course, online stuff, as long as everybody's okay with that. I just, it's easy for me to, because I have access to the Bisbee Arts Commission page. Do you wanna go over the list of artists?
Yes, let's go over a list of artists that we so far have participating. We have Karen Schumacher participating, here she sits. We have Lori McKinnon, Robert Moon Dragon, Lisa Wines, Robin Bray, Kate Bishop, Kate Drew Wilkinson, Tamara Page, is that right, and DeRuff. Did you say they were both saying, oh, Tamara Page, DeRuff. Sam and Poe?
Together.
Together, they're gonna have one, they're gonna alternate boxes. Ruby Odell, Tanya, and I don't remember her last name, the ceramic girl with the fading echoes, she said...
Borgeson.
What's her, what's her...
Borgeson, yeah.
We gave her money, but I don't remember her name. Kim Turpinning, she's a photographer, Judy Perry. And then, do you guys have any more to add to that?
I have Ed, Ed Briggs.
Yes, right, we gave Ed some...
A little Kimmy who works for me wants to do it.
Let's see, we might have too many others, Ed Briggs, did you have Laura McKinnon?
I have Laura McKinnon.
Dale, who does the pottery necklaces.
Dale, that's right, Dale, last name?
I shouldn't know, it's my stepchild's daughter, or, or boyfriend, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, Dale, ceramic necklace, he's already giving you those, right?
I already have them, I just thought it would be a nice mix because it's a 3D thing.
I agree, yeah.
Angela from Lunar Landing wanted to be involved if possible. And then we, that's not including the organizations, oh, Becky Reyes wanted to be involved.
That's right, Becky is gonna take a slot for the Royale.
But she wanted her own slot, I think.
But she's giving the money to the Royale.
Okay. Studio Mariposa.
That's right, Studio Mariposa.
And then Laura, do we still have a contact with the high school or the schools?
I emailed her, I can, I, I need to actually go there, I think, to actually contact the... I forget her name here, I'm here, I'm coming in.
Right now, we're at potentially, are you at 21, I'm at 19.
You, did you put, did you add DeRuff and Tamara Page?
You didn't, I didn't, you already...
Nice parking.
Oh really?
Hey, you're here!
Go ahead, sit down, sit down.
Take her up the speaker.
Yeah, it's one of these nice people, we'll give them back to all Bisbee interdo.
We, we need to discuss the fact that here's another thing that has come up with the slots. There are a few art, there's several artists actually who have said they will donate pieces to the box, but they don't need their own full tents.
We have a few, I had a few missed here.
So they're just people that just wanna make a miniature and put it in a box. Of course, we're gonna be able to see everybody's work before we put it away in the box, but we maybe just have one slot that's miscellaneous Bisbee artists and take your chance.
Donation, yeah.
Donations, full donations, but all $20 will come to us.
And that's kinda, so, so with the high school, I'm actually gonna be here in Bisbee tomorrow, so I can probably go down to the high school.
Alright, email Nana and let us know.
Okay, I will.
I'm assuming not me, but you know.
Um, and then I talked to PSA Art Awakenings. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to get the contract. I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding as far as how the law goes. And I'm gonna try and do some education, but we'll see how.
We don't have to have their names on the works. Or even just PSA Art Awakenings, I understand that wanting to keep their anonymity is important. So, so they would just be, and, and besides, why should PSA, if they want to pay the artists, that's their choice, right? But the money could just go to PSA Art Awakenings.
Yeah, and they could donate their own art. Yeah, and they could donate their own art, but the thing is, is really.
Ryan said he wanted to anyway, but.
Yeah, yeah, Ryan will do it, Ryan will do it.
He said he wants to, yeah.
Yeah, as well. Um, how many colors do we have?
Twenty-two total.
What, I mean, the, the, the machine holds?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two different artists, twenty-two slots, twenty-two.
Somebody will bail perhaps, but.
Yeah, I think, dude, a little Kenny wants to come in, she's good.
Um.
The good news is we're gonna rotate, we, we need to collect a little more names more, 'cause we're gonna rotate these as time goes on.
Yes, especially once we have work.
So I'm gonna try and get those organizations, I do need the contract.
The contracts are legal.
Is legal, yeah, legal has it, so I'm waiting, so hopefully by the, uh, April first meeting.
Do I have to wait to April first to start collecting the art, that's a problem, I mean with, if.
I can check with her again tomorrow to see if she's had time to do that, because she's doing some other stepboards, so let me.
The sooner we can have the contract, the faster I can start getting signatures and getting people committed to we have the work, and also it's.
And if you could, I've already started collecting work, if you have to do that.
Have you, have you seen yet?
No. Um, one thing that we might wanna add to the contract, if possible, is like a checkbox that says, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm choosing just to donate this art.
Yeah, we did not do that. I can, I think that's fine, I can add one, that's for the fact, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
If you wanna do that tonight, you're gonna send it to me in the morning, and then I'll send her that again and say, hey, just a reminder, could you just let me know if this is good to go?
Please, although, hey, could you give me my contract?
So, so see how these yellow dots are going to fit on to close, to close the, now, the problem is the, the paper that they've printed the box with, the coating on this paper, the yellow dots don't want to hold, so I'm gonna have to put like a dot of, um,
Like glue?
Glue.
A paper glue, yeah.
Yeah, but it'll, they will hold, but then, and then assembly of them, I'm gonna let, hand you each one, you can play with them since we're gonna, if you wanna try it.
Uh, it so happens, but I think I have enough, um, I have.
So we are wasting these ones, by the way, these boxes, the truth of the matter of, sorry, sorry, let me.
We were talking about the dots, so I was gonna carry on with the dots.
The dots will, the truth, the matter of this, this box is that it's a one-time-use box, this is not like we're having cigarettes that we open and close, open and close the box. Once you open this box, it is a one-time box.
So which leads me to what I was going to say.
Okay.
It's a, it's cute though.
Which is that I have acquired and have in my studio, a, a bunch of little tiny double-sided self adhesive dots, that you're going to put perfectly on here.
Okay.
But glue's a glue on.
So you don't have to do the glue, right? They just really made yummy things.
Okay.
They just go on, and they'll probably come out of somewhere like, I'll be loving it, I'll never see that.
I'm gonna close it, then I'll keep it.
They have it for scrap, those are getting, I mean, glue is awesome, and it comes with a lot of.
We'll keep that one.
Yeah. So you could, yeah, did you notice it's just two little strips of, of sticky tape, it's just a, it's bold and back to.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, and I just decided to put them below it too, it says to.
Did you read the warning? It's very sweet, this is Karen's. Supporting the arts has been known to broaden an individual's perspective on the world, warning.
Kind of helping eat guts.
It's very sweet, it's very sweet.
Oh yeah, I had a good time, but the other side, I asked people to post what they purchased on our Facebook, it's on the other, on the other.
It's lovely, it's lovely, it's, it's really tasty.
And it was a little more complex, but I think it's simple and it's good.
The fact that it has the little, you know, we don't have to do a number to construct.
We've done good, at least, we've got two hundred and fifty of them. And we can, and they were quick to get to us ultimately, the cost, the entire cost of that, um, what if, Nina, you have that receipt from me, two hundred and some, it was on that bill.
No, it's in my office, sorry.
Two, it was like two hundred and seventy bucks.
It's a little space for signing.
It's not bad.
So.
For five, two hundred and fifty bucks.
Yeah, so it's a hundred dollar each.
No, I mean, that was for.
It came, they, closely they came to about seventy cents a piece, we're from.
Yeah, so I'm just, you know, we got five hundred, oh, excuse me, we got five hundred boxes, not two hundred and fifty, we had five hundred boxes for two hundred and seventy bucks.
Stakes is the Canadian economy sucking.
And, and because we went with a cheap box, realizing that we don't need to, they're not for cigarettes.
No.
Once somebody opens it and pulls their gift out, hopefully they save the signature, whatever, but.
What's that that you got in there?
That's the two tiny canvases.
Bought a bunch to donate.
This is, yeah, we, I had, I, I bought the first six dozen to donate. And then I bought two more boxes of six dozen, one is going to Studio Mariposa, and then this is BAC's box of seventy-two.
Right, that we were thinking about.
And now we should sell them, right, do you think you guys agree, at eighty cents a pop for each one of these little canvases?
Oh, yeah, to artists?
They were, yes.
I've given away a whole lot, but I can't keep giving.
Yeah, exactly, I gave Laura McKinnon ten.
I don't.
Yeah, um.
So you gave Laura McKinnon ten, I gotta write it down.
When we get that contract back, I have two of my own.
Uh, Laura McKinnon.
Randomly.
So Karen Schumacher, you have two.
Yes, I have two.
And Laura has.
Ten. Um, when we get that contract, are you, could I just send out a bulk email with a W nine in that? Thank you for including that W nine in there.
You're welcome.
Bulk emailing.
I mean like a mass email to everybody at once.
That are, that's on our list.
I have, I, I have all these emails, I mean, I.
I have the most, I don't have all of them.
Will you just?
Yeah.
Let me do what you need.
Okay. So you're at, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, including mine, twelve.
Mine's great.
Fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Angela, who's Angela, I don't know this.
Literally, she's the one that, she has the flamenco dancers, I think, with her.
Okay, she, but she wants to be at.
She just had a show at Sense of Place, I mean, she has.
Oh, Carol Chandler, five, we have twenty-two, we have Carol Chandler from, from that gallery.
The other thing that I was gonna recommend at this unveiling, I just thought about it, was that if there's any way to get an extra piece or not put all ten in the box, it would be cute to have them all, every, every, different artists on display. And then, get the, you know, so everybody can see all the different possibilities, and then.
And that's a nice idea.
Well, not everybody is painting a canvas.
No, it's, well, but we can.
Or they can take pictures and we cannot, we can, uh.
Show them or something.
Show them pictures or not.
Well, we really need such a, to have a strip of everybody's real stuff.
Yeah, they have those little, they have these little tiny easels, you know?
I mean, that would be really nice, how are you gonna do it?
I don't really know.
Exactly.
I know, it could be down, it's just a, it's just a, a place to get placed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It'd be cute.
Yeah.
It's not the, the most important thing here. I think that, what else do we have, guys?
Um, how much did you say those tiny canvas ones are?
Eighty.
So we got seventy-two canvases for, uh, forty-eight dollars.
And you're selling it for eighty cents?
That was rounding up, making it forty-seven, sixty-seven.
Sixty, sixty-seven cents a piece.
Okay.
It's not bad.
Okay, so it's eighty cents, should we just do an, an even dollar, 'cause that's easy.
That's a dollar that somebody's gonna lose of their ten dollars that they.
We'll just charge them seventy-five cents, I think.
Seventy-five.
Everybody will, everybody will show, be shocked at seventy-five cents.
Yeah, then they still make nine dollars and twenty-five cents, but not every, like, yeah, not everybody's painting a canvas, so, yeah.
Yeah.
The canvas makes it easy though, everybody I show the canvas to goes, oh, I want some.
Alright, they're adorable.
Everybody wants to work on a little canvas.
I mean, really, they're perfect for the, um, you have the water paint, when you, you add the water, and you just drop it on.
Oh yeah, those are cool.
Abstracts.
Yeah, they're abstracts and they're, they're really, they're easy to make.
That's good, Tamara Page says, like, she's gonna make, she makes one giant thing on board and then cuts them into little pieces.
Yeah, right.
That was her idea, um.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So you're on poster, you're like, oh god.
I'm, I'm just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get the machine pulled together entirely and not try to get on the art.
So food and booze and all that, you're gonna talk to her about the booze situation?
Yes, I will.
Alright.
Clarify that, um, do we wanna try and ask the Roca to donate some food, do we wanna do that kind of thing?
I think it's a good idea.
Let's ask them if they really usually will.
They would, usually will, and it's nice to have appetizers and people coming, yeah. And you like the idea of charging ten dollars, did we ask you that?
That was one thing, that's the only thing we haven't voted on yet.
Do we charge for this event?
I always feel very mixed feelings about charging for fundraisers, which is a weird thing.
But that's very weird, because that's exactly where, you know, that's, I mean, the first thing you do when you go to a fundraiser, a real fundraiser, is you buy your ticket for a hundred bucks. And then you get a rubber, piece of rubber chicken and you eat it, then.
It's true.
You, then you bid on a whole bunch of things that you're supposed to have a silent, I mean.
Let's do ten dollars.
We want, we don't do.
You're planning on charging for food?
No, I, oh yeah, well, that's.
Well, if, if we, if we, if we get ten dollars from everybody that comes through the door, we don't have to charge for food, do we?
And then we don't have to monitor that the entire time.
Well, we needed an Eventbrite thing if we're gonna charge.
Um, she suggested not using Eventbrite because they take like two dollars and something cents on each sale.
But every online thing takes money.
Don't you think we can just on, on, can't, don't you think we can also just try to sell tickets directly?
Tickets at the door?
Or tickets, our, individually, we sell tickets and at the door. You don't think that will work?
I just want people who buy tickets on one day.
Well, that's, yeah, I'm gonna take, how many people do we want, we have two hundred and twenty bo- boxes, we need two hundred and twenty.
We're gonna have to print tickets.
So all I want, at least one.
We're not gonna do on one, but we need.
We know you're gonna buy four on your own.
I know, I have a Bisbee Arts Commission.
Yes.
Banner. If we are going to charge for tickets, I highly recommend we do the old Bisbee hustle, at least where you sit in front of the post office.
I actually love to do that.
Oh yeah, I could do that.
I can ask it with you.
You guys can hustle together.
I'd do it.
Okay, and maybe even a couple days.
But can I?
Two days.
I thought it was in town.
That is gonna work, the additional one would be the farmer's market hustle.
Right. Also, I like that idea of, of individually selling tickets myself, um, and then I'm always gonna take two dollars and sixty cents when you.
So we'll emotionally back down everyone we know, but then I take a.
I have a hundred and seventy-five or two.
Totally, we've all got, we've all got a decent level of popularity, basically.
Yeah, I would, I could see when it comes to yoga, I can guilt them all into it.
We, and I don't know what you're talking about popularity, um, but we, we need to print tickets.
Oh, so someone has to design the tickets.
Okay.
So that'll be the.
We also don't have the band.
But we're gonna get the.
For the.
We will, we're not, we can't sell tickets right now.
So we're not selling tickets yet anyways, too soon, let's, let's tell, let's decide.
It'll be the beginning, we wait till the beginning of the month.
Who puts up the tickets?
Well, we'll just print it, we can get a Bisbee office to print off the tickets, we just need to design a basic ticket.
Do they do it in a last row, I mean, do they put tickets in a row?
No, it's gonna be, it's gonna be paper on the.
Not like raffle tickets. We'll just, we'll.
I'm thinking raffle ticket.
I have raffle tickets in a row, but I don't know if that's what you wanna sell.
If you do on a, if you do an eight and a half by eleven, um, or, what is it? You, you do, um, six, two, two, well, this, this is, one sheet of paper is like twelve tickets.
You know, you can give them to me when you've got them printed up.
And then we'll do it on card stock.
We'll give you some too.
I've got a guillotine and I can cut them up for you.
Oh great.
Okay, and I have one too.
So everybody will get tickets, we have to wait till the band, we have to wait till the tickets are designed, but, um, okay, that's good. We're all willing to do the old Bisbee hustle, which is really, works well.
Oh, yeah, it's, actually, it's fun.
It's fun.
I've, I've done it too, I don't know.
I'm sure I can be really good at that.
We do it for Central School, it does, it totally works.
All the tourists, my English accent.
Yeah, you can do this.
Hello, hello.
So your official role, role is seduction, of course.
Seduction.
Actually, really, that, that's perfect for.
Your official role is seducing.
Seducing the public.
It works.
Absolutely, I mean, adorable.
And you're happy with it.
Yes, I'm.
So, for the poster, the event is five to nine, April twenty-sixth, we have a band, we're not sure who that is.
Miller's just last name.
Right?
Oh.
God, I shouldn't have known.
Could you want to have an option?
Before we go on to the poster, can we vote on, could you vote on the tickets, please?
Really, do you want to let's hear? I move to, be char, I move to charge ten dollars for this unveiling party, for the cigar art machine at the Bisbee Royale on April twenty-sixth, do I have a second?
You're chairman.
I'll second your price for tickets.
And the fact that we're ticketing.
And ticketing.
All eyes?
Aye.
Alright, so that's good, I, I think ten bucks is fine, as long as, especially if we're all, if we're all individually hustling.
So we're having a silent auction and.
We're hoping to have a silent auction.
I think, I like the idea of the silent auction, I like the idea of the easels, I think that even though the Royale is very dark, I think it can be really good for this particular, kinda low-key option.
It's low-key, more limited, it's just the people who are selling the machines. Um, I think that's a good idea.
The two lights that I can learn are really theatrically sweet, they're like, they're like miniature film roots.
That's perfect.
They have a nice big bulb and they're good.
So I feel good about all of this, is there anything else that we wanna, so tickets, including the time and everything, you know, all those details. But then we'll also have to include the band. The band will play at six.
And so, so let's just, let's, we are, I guess we're all calling it now, yeah, they don't play at six, not at five. Um, the, we're all agreeing to call it the Cigar Art Machine, SIG standing for Community Interactive Giving. So let's make sure that we make sure people understand that, that.
I've been putting it in italics.
Okay.
Of course.
Yeah. Do that again, Community Interactive Giving, interactive in the sense that not only.
You gotta push the button.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta.
Or pull it, the whole of it.
Gotta push your money in, we tested the machine, Carlos and I did a lot of testing on the machine, we tested that the, that the boxes have to be a little bit weighted.
Okay.
Um, even maybe a little bit more than one of these canvases, to be truthful, we're, we're playing with that, uh, we, we, actually, what we're gonna do is we're gonna weight it from the top with a, with a block. That's gonna say sold out at the bottom as well, so.
Isn't that okay? Tamara Page did mention, the pages are a cigarette machine, they were gonna do something similar, and what they found was that unless the boxes weighed enough, they wouldn't go out.
Right.
Okay, so.
We discovered that.
And they, they were willing also, just for future, to donate another cigarette machine to us.
Oh, you're gonna wanna do this again?
You know, Carrie actually arrived in town with one when she did her restaurant, didn't know what to do, and she came in with one already set up with money.
That's a whole nother debate, alright.
So with regards to that, I think everything, uh, on the machine, we, there's a couple things that Carlos has to tweak, um, on a couple of the slots, it's an interesting thing that each slot has to be tested. But each one did have to be tested, um, so anyway, uh, that's, let's see, what else did he have, hold on.
Um, and, uh, a question, during the event, will we be gonna have anybody that is, you know, that's actually with the machine to make sure it works for everybody?
Well, the machine works, by the way, the wonderful thing about these machines is they're all metal. There's no plastic carts to break, and they're designed to, to sit in bars and to be, you know,
Reviable.
All night long, people. This machine is fifty-five years old and it's not broken, so I think the good news is, oh, I also tested the money. We have to put somewhere on our, uh,
Graphic.
On our graphic, or if we're gonna use these three elements for graphics, we talked about possibly using that. Um, because he built that thing that goes on top. We were suggesting that possibly the blue or turquoise-y color, uh, trapezoid thing, will be, um, Bisbee Arts Commission, a little bit about us, and, uh, a little bit about the machine, and one of the things that needs to be said about the machine, it needs, there's, the machine cannot make change. So let's just say that you, you know, twenty dollars. It doesn't, but it takes ones, fives, and tens. Now, if you, you know, you can put them in in any order, but they better be twenty dollars. Let's say you start with a five, you can put a twenty in, you just paid twenty-five dollars for your cigarette.
Must be exact change.
Yeah, must be exact change, but they will accept all the bills.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what, what may change? Unless there is a, um, you know, anyone disagrees, I will also hit up the showgirls to be there to help with drinks or something.
Oh yes.
Oh, I was thinking you were gonna say sell the tickets, I was like, they'll sell those tickets.
I believe the Rokas, they may be a fairer, you know, so I will ask what they can do to help, but they, they usually come to the event and do something.
Was he around?
Yeah, exactly. I did not say that. But it is not true.
That's now on record.
Anything else? I think we're doing pretty good. I'm trying to get Nine out of here in less than an hour.
Let's, let's be done.
Alright, um, I'm, any, anything? So we'll wait again at the beginning of the month. We will resolve the band then, if I have not informed them, uh, I'm going to be sending information to you about the band and the graphic.
Yeah, I need band, graphic, anything you want to go on to that poster.
Well, she's gonna add that thing to the contract, and I'll send it back out and try to get that done.
Add donation to contract and send to Nine on five. Alright, alright. I will do that in the morning.
So we have managed, by the way, to fill the machine, and we do not have a slot for anybody putting MP3s in. Let's just keep that as a background thing to do later on.
And they also didn't have a place to spend two hundred dollars.
Oh no, the two hundreds are just, there's gonna be a, did you hear that when you're driving? Do you like that idea?
I like the idea.
I think it gives people like, oh, I have a chance to win a hundred bucks, that's a pretty good odds.
So you'd wanna put it in like the first five for it to go that night, right? Because it's just for the event night, right? And I gotta write that down.
And we'll begin with, we'll begin with somebody's something.
It'll be in, yeah, we'll just randomly choose, let's put, you know, a hundred dollars here in this machine, a hundred dollars here in this machine.
So band, you know, showgirls, a donation for, and then, okay. Anything else? And then we will all, we will communicate about everything else in the hustle of selling in front. So that's gonna be, that probably will be after our, our next meeting.
Which days are the hustle at the outside the post office?
Usually Friday mornings are great.
Friday the what?
I don't know yet.
Because I'll be back to you the first.
Well, it'll be after that, for sure. We, and if we do it a couple Fridays, it actually, it'll be good. Because it's, if you do Saturday, there's just not as many people.
No, now Saturday is when they're...
And if we wanted to do the farmer's market, for instance, we do that on Saturday too, and also dig out that banner. And I, we will have to borrow clipboards from the library. Well, and twenty, so.
Twenty, yeah.
Um, you think three weeks is enough weeks to promote?
Yeah, usually it's, you need about three, you need three weeks to a month.
At least three, yeah.
At least, yeah.
Posters have to be out three weeks before, usually. Um, if we can get it done before then, let's get it done before then.
I can, I can find my clipboard.
As soon as we know the band will be waiting.
They looked at it, just let me have one, and I can put it on our website and our Facebook page and get out.
Cool.
So yeah, the sooner the better, but it leaves behind, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, and we're doing okay, and we're gonna figure out food on the side, right?
Yes, we're gonna have food.
Food is free, drinks are free.
Drinks chargeable.
Alright, charge your drinks, done.
Do we have to go over that?
Maybe, or maybe with the ten dollar per, with their ten dollar ticket, they get one, um...
I think that's a fair, you get a drink.
A drink, a drink ticket.
Oh yeah, that makes sense.
Yes.
And then the food is appetizers, right?
That matters.
So the food is free.
Yeah.
And next we meet on April Fool's Day.
So if we can talk to Becky about, maybe if they wanna do the bar, and we just, the free, one free drink is through us, we can figure out something to, I don't know, we'll, we'll figure it out, Becky.
There was just one last thing, one last idea with regards to the event, um, that perhaps we would have an idea box, we could ask people to give us ideas of what they would like the Bisbee Arts Commission to pursue.
Okay.
And we could give them ideas of what that might be, even, if we even made a little, like, would you like us to be involved with murals?
My idea box is so weird. It's like a giant box that a kid jumps out at you for, so I don't know why it is that in my head, but, yeah.
Oh.
Idea box is great, we'll do that.
Okay. And then that's all that I have for this.
People seem to be, um...
Anybody else?
People seem to be enjoying the, uh, the stuff about the notice outside the post office, seems to be good, that work.
I intentionally put that out there, I got approval from Dwayne, his last day. And, um, obviously, there's not much debate about that.
No, it's enthusiastic.
And we have not voted on it yet, that's why I said we are beginning the bureaucratic process, but I put that intentionally out today so that they would be in their mind when we try to hit them up for tickets in a couple weeks.
Yeah.
I know, that's, I know.
You're, you're a shiny little cookie, you are.
Well, you know, because people, everybody wants the bolt and all, even Dwayne was like, that was my last wish, that's what he said. So, um, Ben will be giving us a breakdown of the cause before the next meeting, so. Alright, guys, I move to, wait for Sharon to...
Yes.
I move to adjourn this meeting of the Bisbee Arts Commission, do I have a second?
Yes.
You have a second?
Aye, let's do it. Thanks, guys.
You've done good, I think.